Good evening and welcome to the Milford Select Board meeting this evening of January 22nd, 2024. Thank you for tuning in. And before we start our agenda, I'd like to entertain a motion to sign the signing of the warrant.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we sign the warrant for the date of January 8th, January 24th.
Okay.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous. Thank you very much. Also, we have a approval of the regular session minutes of the Select Board for January 8th, 2024. I'll make a motion to approve these minutes.
Take a moment. Yes, and I'll second that. Michael?
I would second that as well.
I make that unanimous. Thank you very much. Also, we have executive session minutes of January 8th, 2024, which is our first one at 5:00 P.M.
And I make a motion that we approve those minutes of the executive session, January 8th, 5:00 P.M.
And I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous. We also have January 8th executive session minutes, 2024, at 6:00 P.M. Motion to approve.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of January 8th, 6:00 P.M.
And I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous. Moving forward on our agenda, we have no public hearings this evening. For our scheduled appointments, we do have our police chief, Robert Tuzino, who was here tonight to give us an update. And Chief Tuzino, we asked you to attend this meeting this evening to give us an update on public safety, especially where recently we had some experience with a few incidents that were considered serious in nature and also caused residents to be concerned, as well as a challenge to also our law enforcement agency. Fortunately, those responsible who caused these problems were quickly apprehended in an hour off the streets, which also proves the effectiveness of our police department in keeping us safe. Where a serious incident happened over a short period of time, people were concerned about the direction of the town and also was, again, it happened one right after another in almost similar types of a situation. And where also where public safety is most basic and important to us as a Select Board, as well as you as a police chief, what we'd like to do is, it's important for the residents to know what steps the police department is taking in keeping them safe and how, what's happening now and how can you continue with what you're doing now. Again and again, again, like I do want to repeat myself for effectiveness, the apprehension of these individuals in such a short period of time was phenomenal. It was great police work, and we thank you for that. And again, thank you for taking the time to come to us and explain and give us an update on public safety. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, one of these incidents, I know we're talking in general terms, but one of these incidents I do have involvement in as a lawyer, my partner does as well. So respectfully, in the interest not only of the town and the chief, but our client's interests, I'm going to recuse myself. So I'm going to, I'll leave the meeting just until this portion's done.
All right. Thank you for your concern.
There is one of three incidents that if it gets into details.
Yeah, I don't expect that, but you know, I understand what you're saying.
No, I just, I have to be cautious. And I have to be cautious to protect not only the interest of the police department and the law, but to protect the interest of our client.
That's understandable. Thank you so much, Tom. Thank you for your honesty.
Thank you.
He knows, he knows.
Yeah, let's get right into it. So, you know, first of all, you said good police work. Well, that's definitely well stated. One of these incidents, the gunpoint robbery that happened at the market over on Beach Street, so let's look at that for a second. And again, when I'm vague or if I see like a misleading, there's obviously some parts of this case that I'm not going to talk about because it's an ongoing case. All these things are ongoing cases. But I mean, you can understand that. But we'll keep it simple. So this day and age where there's Internet and everybody, you know, there's no more Milford stops here than it's, you know, Hope Dale, Upton, or you go into Franklin. You know, those days don't exist anymore. Everybody's connected with the Internet and everybody goes back and forth with what they see at stores. And this basically was a crime of opportunity. You know, it was a crime of opportunity. They felt that there was probably a large sum of money there and they decided to, for lack of a better word, go rob it. It's that simple. There's no secret math here, but you know, what's interesting is, is this wasn't a concerted effort by people who live in over. You know, we apprehended one person in town and even that person's ties to the community are, I can't say that they're steadfast. What do I mean by that? Has the person been in the community before? They have been. Does the person live in the community? I don't believe so. Did we find them in the community? Sure. But the other two people, you know, weren't from town. We have no record of them being in town. So this was a crime of opportunity and this can happen anywhere. You know, when I was a cop in New York City, we were in front of this one establishment in Chinatown because it was supposed to get held up and there was an ongoing issue with gangs and we were there for days. Well, the second we left, it got held up. So there's really no way to mitigate something like that. But what you can do is the response, right? The Milford Canine, they were out there in the pouring rain. You know, your detective division, the pouring rain that night when it happened, gathering evidence, working the scene. And to the point that here we are, you know, two weeks later, all three parties have been identified, in custody, evidence secured.
Right.
You know.
Within a short period of time.
Suspect vehicle identified and secured, processed with crime scene. This is unheard of. And how many people got hurt? Zero.
Right.
No bystanders got hurt, no police officers got hurt. We have the SWAT team come out as precautionary to get that one individual because there were firearms shown at the store. Okay? This was great work from beginning to end. And you have to understand something. It doesn't work like Monday through Friday, you call me, I'll call you back. When you're a detective working a case like that, it's constant. It's constant. You have to be red hot, you know? Doesn't matter that you just got home and got comfortable. Guess what? Somebody said they might have eyes on this individual. You're moving.
Right, right.
And you're moving all over the state. You're working with the state police, you're working with outside agencies. And we went from nobody knowing anything.
Right.
To less than two weeks, this case buttoned up.
Exactly. Yeah.
In the policing world, that's unheard of.
Right.
Okay? It wasn't like there was a domestic where you can say, oh, you know, my ex so-and-so did this to me and now we're just looking for that person. No. You had to go identify people. You had to look at hours and hours of videotape, home surveillance tape, the public contacting you, you contacting the public, working social media to your advantage.
Right.
I mean, that was just amazing how fast it got solved.
Exactly.
It's interesting to talk about the community because, you know, my phone was nonstop at people in the Brazilian community that were outraged. You know, they were outraged that this happened within their community.
Right.
And, you know, I've had some interesting emails and some phone calls over the past couple of weeks and, you know, alls I'll say about, you know, within the Brazilian community is, anytime you have an ethnic community, there's always going to be ill-intentioned people looking to take advantage of them. Okay? What do I mean by that? Look at the Italian mafia did to the Italians, right? The Irish mafia, right? They preyed off of them, right? Internally, right? They extorted money, right? Robbed. I mean, we can go on and on and on with the story.
So they took advantage of their own, of their ethnicity?
They did. They took advantage of their own ethnicity. They took advantage of the fact that, you know, people go there, they shop, there's a lot of wire transfer money that went on there and that's what they capitalized on.
So somebody really had to know the ins and outs of that establishment then?
Absolutely. And there's a million ways to know the ins and outs, you know? When you say ins and outs, you think, oh, is it an inside job? Well.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
Well, it doesn't have to be. Alls it can be is you go there and shop and then you talk to somebody and say, hey, that place was packed. You know, the money that must be changing hands over there? Boom, 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 social media. You get in touch with these people and this is how it happens. I mean, it's really that simple. It's not reinventing the wheel. And as far as this crime wave goes or a spike in crime, you know, that's not the case at all. Certainly you've had a couple incidents happen around the same time. You know, let's talk about, you know, the stabbing that happened.
Right.
The stabbing that happened, these people knew each other. This wasn't somebody was walking down the street and got held up and got stabbed. These people knew each other. And more importantly, these people are known to the police. This isn't a new element.
Right.
These are people that we've had interactions with for some time.
Right.
So this is not reinventing.
So it's not that they were new to Milford either?
No, not even close. Not even close new to Milford.
Right.
And someone made, you know, the statement about, oh, I don't feel safe walking downtown. And I was like, well, where are you walking downtown that you don't feel safe? That's ridiculous. You know, when I was a young man, I went to the Body Shop, J.D. Antonio, God rest his soul, on Jefferson Street. We'd go from middle school east after school. We'd walk over to the Body Shop and, you know, you'd work out and Jay was always so good to us and kind to us. But when we'd leave, he'd say, listen, boys, I don't want you walking down on Central Street. Dirty Boulevard. I don't want you walking down there. Walk the other way. Go up Jefferson Street and head straight home. And if you can't, I'll give you a ride.
Wow, yeah, yeah.
Well, back then, I wouldn't want to walk in Central Street. I wasn't allowed to walk in Central Street.
Yeah.
Okay? That doesn't exist anymore. You can certainly walk on Central Street. And, you know, it's kind of offensive because half these people who do email me a call, you don't even know where Central Street is. You know, somebody said that to me. Oh, I don't feel safe walking. You don't even know where Central Street is. You live far from center of town, you're not from town, you don't even know where Central Street is.
Right.
What are you talking about?
Right.
You know, I mean, in there, you know, you hear stories back in the day of the wall over in front of Stacy School.
Yeah.
Okay? You know, my father is a young police officer, would spend his time chasing people out of, in front of there because it was a bad criminal element sometimes, you know? In the seventies, Johnny Carson, Milford was a drug capital of the United States.
He said that on one of his shows.
Yeah, on The Tonight Show.
Yeah.
So this crime wave, it doesn't exist and it doesn't concern me at all as far as the crime. The things that concern me, you know, were when we have house breaks and stuff like that. And, you know, knock on wood, we're doing really well with that. We're not seeing a lot of that at all. The detectives, we had some of that back in the summer.
Right.
There were quick arrests made, a lot of the residential, you know, like Ring cameras and, you know, a couple people were taken into custody. You know, I mean, we do really well here with addressing these things, but as far as a crime wave, I mean, there's no crime wave and you can walk anywhere in this town. That's not an issue.
Well, like I said, some of the individuals that would be concerned. And, you know, like I said, when you see this happening, like you said, in that short period of time.
Yeah.
The two, you know, people would say, well, how do they find Milford?
Yeah.
You know, why do they come to Milford? For instance, like for instance, the one that you guys solved back in October, where the individual escaped from a hospital in Marlboro and was ended up on an apartment on West Street.
Right.
Yet he came to Milford, you guys found him and whatnot, you know? So like I said, one of the things I wanted to ask you too, Rob, Chief Tuzino, is that, you know, a lot of these individuals who were apprehended by, the three of them, for instance, especially and then the other young fellow who did the stabbing on South Bow Street, they appear to have like the facial tattoos. Would that be a sign of a gang? Should we be concerned about it? Maybe a gang starting up or something in town?
No, I mean, listen, the detectives and the school resource officer, you know, Anthony Bavozzi does a great job watching this thing.
Sure does, yes.
You know, Cody Cunero, they watch for tagging and stuff like that. I have no reason to believe there's any gangs starting in town, you know? Are there gangs in and around? Of course there are.
Sure.
They're everywhere, there always has been. And as far as, you know, the influx of people into Milford, well, I got news for everybody. Where do you think you live? You know, this is a big place. A lot of people want to come and live here. A lot of people want to be here. Milford has a lot to offer, you know? And in growth, there are growing pains, right? There are growing pains.
Right.
You know, we have Milford Hospital. Well, Milford Hospital in this area is the only game in town.
Sure is.
You know? You're going to go to Worcester or you're going to go to Boston?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, do the math. It's not hard to figure out. So a lot of people are drawn to Milford. You know, I mean, rentals in Milford, how high are they right now? Some of the highest around. Okay? People want to be here. Well, when people want to be here, you're going to have congestion, you're going to have, you know, we're going to have traffic, traffic accidents, you know, backup, you know? And you're going to have certain levels of crime. But as far as walking around and walking down the street and gangs, that's not an issue. Not even close.
Well, good to hear. That's good to hear. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief, for coming in this evening.
Of course.
For the general public who didn't see it because we weren't on camera at the time, for me, our fellow colleague who sits on the board with us, over 40 years in the police business, over 33 or 34 years as a police chief, walked in the room and said in a general comment, Chief Tuzino and his department have done a phenomenal job in handling this spree of, you know, the latest spree of crimes.
Sure.
And that coming from somebody with that kind of experience is quite a compliment to you and your department. You know, we were talking earlier before the meeting, one of the things that we hear a lot of, all of us, you know, out in the general public is, you know, it's not the same town that I grew up in. No, it's not. Nothing stays the same. Very famous song, "Nothing Stays the Same." But, you know, as a community, as a police department, fire department, town municipality, are we doing a good job adapting to the changes that are in this community? You know, Chairman Mazza Kelly and I spent years together on the school committee. We dealt with it at the school.
Yeah.
You know, we do a phenomenal job. You know, we say all the time, if your son or daughter is not involved in something in the Milford Public Schools, shame on you because it's there. And the same thing in this community, to what you just said, Chief. People say to me, well, you know, I don't really feel safe walking down Main Street. I said, would you like to walk down Main Street with me?
Yeah.
Because I'll walk down in 24 hours. I don't care. I feel very safe in this community because I know the men and women that are on your force are out there and they're doing a great job. And a couple of things that, you know, I picked up on through this investigation, and I'm no expert, trust me, but was very impressive is, first of all, the chief of police was on scene at every single, every single scene. Says a lot. You know, especially at four o'clock in the morning, very easily he could have said, well, you know, who's the shift supervisor?
Yeah, it's all habitual.
Yeah, let him or her handle it. No, no, you were there.
Yeah.
A comment was made to me that when the situation up on West Street and the TV helicopters were in the air and you had drones in the air, you were the one that was smart enough to say, get a hold of the TV station, get the helicopters out of here.
Because it affects the drone, right?
Yeah, we got drones in the air.
Right, yeah.
Those are the things that I look at. I say, wow, they had that in tune to this situation.
Oh, absolutely.
That, you know, a lot of people look up and say, oh, that's Channel Five's helicopter. You said, they're in the way. Get them out of here for now.
Yeah.
You know, which is, which is really impressive. And then you made mention to it, the SWAT team, the state police, you're not afraid or ashamed to bring in, you know, levels of expertise and the most important, as you said earlier, to protect the men and women in your department.
Absolutely.
That's the most important thing. And, you know, we just saw it last night. I forget what town it was, an officer, thank God, is going to be okay.
Yeah, got shot.
Got shot.
Yeah.
And you just made a great point. We had three incidents. Yeah, is it unfortunate? Absolutely. We had zero injuries, zero, because the professionalism that's, you know, that's in our department and it's key. And thank you again for coming on because, and I understand the general public doesn't have access to information that we have access to, but we wanted the general public to hear it from you. You are very safe in this community.
Absolutely.
This is a safe community.
Oh, absolutely.
And you've said it since the day we appointed you. You want to talk to me? Just walk up to the station, say, can I talk to the chief? You'd be more than happy to talk to him.
Yeah, and to your point, you know, someone walking on Main Street, I had someone say to me, oh, well, this, this isn't Main Street with the soda shop and the $2 grab bag. I'm like, okay, it's not. Because I remember all those things, soda shop and cooch and, okay, I don't know what to tell you. But you're saying two different things. You're talking about not knowing people on Main Street anymore and you're talking about being afraid to walk on Main Street. Two different things.
Right, totally.
You know what I mean? I don't know. I think the rail trail's pretty awesome.
Sure.
I don't know. Go in there.
Yeah.
Like, I don't know what you're talking about. They're two different things. You know, yes, you know, cooch, God rest his soul, you know, you're right. He's not making hot dogs, you know, over in, he's not. Soda shop is not open anymore.
Right.
You know, the gob shop is not open anymore. I don't know what to tell you. You know what I mean?
Talking 50s and 60s.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is people, you know, they have these conversations with me and they're confusing. I'm looking, I'm like, you're not talking about, well, I don't feel safe walking on Main Street. Okay, but that's not what you're saying.
Right, right.
You're saying it's not the Main Street that it used to be 50. It's not. And that, you know, is that a good thing, a bad thing? I don't know. That's not for me to judge.
Right, right.
Maybe spend more time on Main Street.
Exactly, yeah.
You know? And as far as you talk about robbing places, I mean, Daverin's Pharmacy on Water Street was robbed. There was a shootout in the street.
Yeah.
When I was a kid.
Yeah.
Like, you know, crime of opportunity. Those things happen.
Crime happens, yeah.
Yeah, crime happens, but it's how you handle that, right?
You react to it and how you.
And it's how you react to it and how quick you button it up. I mean, if I was here, you know, six months from now, seven months from now, and you asked me the same question, you're like, where are you guys with this? You know, what's going on?
Right.
Other than the prosecution, this case is done.
It's done with what the police department can do.
That's unheard of.
It is.
It's done. All the cases are done.
Right.
Why? Because you have energetic, well-trained, enthusiastic men and women on the police department.
Right. And they proved themselves, I'll tell you.
Absolutely.
They really did.
We have a great group, you know what I mean? We really do. I, it's easy for me to manage such a group because it's just really a support role and, you know what I mean? Just be there for them and help them with things they need. But I got to tell you what, they're self-motivated, they're very hard-charging, and they weren't going to, you know, sit back and wait for this to come to them. They went out and made this happen.
Mm-hmm. And it took a lot of time and effort, like you said. I mean, they worked around the clock.
Time from their families, time from events, you know, it didn't, that stuff.
It's not that this, this isn't my shift, I'm all done now. They kept working continuously.
And everybody, yeah.
Right.
So it was a good outcome.
So the people in town can feel very proud of that and.
Yeah, absolutely.
And more importantly, feel very safe.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Yeah.
That's good to hear.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you so much for your time.
Please tell the men and women how you're doing. Glad I could come in.
Clearing a lot of things up too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good night.
You have a good night.
Keep up the great work. We're very, very proud of you and the force.
See you later.
Thank you.
Take it easy.
Once I plant them, okay. Well, thank you. Hope the public that listened to this feels at ease to know that they are protected and it's not, it's a continuous work in progress. It never stops. It just continues and continues. Public safety, be it police, be it fire, we're all very proud of those two departments and we're just very fortunate to have them. They're a credit to our town. Next on the agenda is the Town Administrator's Report. Rick?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two items to report today. I'm pleased to report that HR Director Kristin Mopignano has scheduled a mandatory management training. We have had one session already, it was Wednesday of last week, it was a full-day session for all department heads. It is done through the UMass Collins Center. There will be two additional sessions, one on January 31st and one on February 15th. This is comprehensive training for all department heads and it will meet the minimum requirements for anti-harassment, sexual harassment, and discrimination training as well. It also covers supervising, supervision of employees, discipline of employees. So I want to thank Kristin for that.[1443.13] We have had one session already, it was Wednesday of last week, it was a full-day session for all department heads. It is done through the UMass Collins Center. There will be two additional sessions, one on January 31st and one on February 15th. This is comprehensive training for all department heads and it will meet the minimum requirements for anti-harassment, sexual harassment, and discrimination training as well. It also covers supervising, supervision of employees, discipline of employees, so I want to thank Kristen for that. We have one other program that we've been trying to do for a while and we finally now have put in place. Kristen has also scheduled two CPR training sessions for all interested town employees. One has been held already. There'll be another one tomorrow, which I plan to attend. This is something we've talked about for a while but never could seem to put in place.
That's good to hear.
And that's in place also. That's all I have tonight.
Very good, thank you, Rick. That's good to know too.
Thank you very much.
It's, it's a good thing to know, CPR, you never know. Anything, anyway, next on the agenda is old business, gentlemen?
I have no old business.
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
And I do not either. On the new business, what we do have is a, Apollo Kitchen seeks to transfer its common victor's license to Apollo Kitchen Group. The property is addressed at 206 East Main Street, Unit 12. The new manager would be Jonathan Consalves and all paperwork is in order and checking out the application for this transfer. Everything does seem to be in order. Our building commissioner did say it's zoned for that occupancy of the building and also restrooms are accessible. Town planner approves, no changes to use. Tax collector, no outstanding taxes. Town treasurer has no concerns. Police chief approved. And also the board of health has no issues. Everything is in order, so I will entertain a motion to approve the transfer of this common victor's license to Apollo's Kitchen Group, which is located at 206 Main Street, Unit 12.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we allow the transfer of a common victor license from Apollo's Kitchen to Apollo's Kitchen Group at 206 Main Street, East Main Street, excuse me, Unit Number 12.
Thank you.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous. Thank you for that. Next on the agenda is an email that Chief Robert Tassino received from a resident on Salt High Street requesting that the board approve an installation of an autistic child sign. And this is going to be on Salt High Street. And what the concern is too, that is my old neighborhood as well, there is that cutoff on Salt High Street from Water Street to West Street or West Street to Water Street, which are two main busy streets and people do cut across that a lot. And there are young children in the neighborhood, especially with this autistic child. And cars do seem, you know, if they're behind the schedule and whatnot, they seem to speed up. It is a congested area, it's an older neighborhood. And the Chief Tassino does approve putting the sign up for the autistic individual. And I'll just, to bring awareness, and he supports this 100%. And that'll also help keep cars a little slower too for other children in the neighborhood as well. So I'll entertain a motion to approve this sign.
I make a motion that we approve the chief's recommendation for an autistic child sign on Salt High Street. We're protecting kids.
Sure.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous. Thank you for that. Next on the agenda is the annual town meeting timeline, which is requesting the board to schedule the town meeting for May, the annual time, Monday, May 20th, 2024. And as you can see, the timeline, which would start with tonight if we do approve it. Again, Town Council will have time to begin the preparation of the official warrant on Monday, March 4th to 25th. The Select Board will approve the final warrant and that goes on to say the warrant will be then for production and so on and so forth. Copies will be sent to the town meeting members prior to the town meeting. And clerk will also post copies of the warrant in ten public places throughout town. And the town meeting will then be on Monday, the 24th, May 20th, 2024. If anybody has any questions or concerns with this, I would like to hear them. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion that we approve the dates as presented by the Town Administrator and the Town Clerk for purposes of the annual town meeting as well as the evaluation of proposals going to town meeting.
Good. And I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. All this is in order, I make that unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for that too, Rick, for that as well. And last on the new business would be the appointment of a part-time senior center program coordinator. And this is from our Town Administrator, Attorney Malani. And he says that the position of a part-time senior center program coordinator was advertised both on the town website and indeed.com. They received 21 applications for this position. They were reviewed, the resumes were reviewed with HR Director. After careful consideration, they're recommending Ms. Kim Whitley for the position. And Mrs. Whitley recently was employed as activities director for the branch, the branches of North Attleboro, a senior living facility for the past two and a half years. In her position, Ms. Whitley was responsible for developing the monthly activities calendar, planning events, and coordinating a volunteer program. In addition, she's a graduate of Bryan College, holds a master's degree from Leslie College in elementary education. Her familiarity with senior population and her previous work as a program coordinator make her an ideal candidate for this position. Thank you for the time you're putting to this, Rick, and our HR Director, Kristen.
Yeah, I want to thank Kristen and Lisa did the bulk of the work.
Sure. Well, that's much appreciated. Like I said, it's, she has the experience, she has the education, and she has the knowledge for over two and a half years by doing the same position. And she'll be starting on Grade Three Step One under Article Two. Her wages will be $26.71. And if everything goes well this evening, she'll begin work on January 30th, 2024. Any comments or concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the appointment of Kim Whitley for the position of Senior Center Program Coordinator, Grade Three Step One, Article Two, effective January 30th, 2024, at a rate of $26.71 per hour.
Michael, second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I make that unanimous. Thank you. And thank Kristen and Rick again. Next on the agenda is invitation to speak. Anybody online or anything like that? No, no one here? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I did today get two emails and I was going to ask Mr. Valani if he could just give the chief a call in the morning. Two residents on Prairie Street have reached out to me. I did, because of the address. Enterprise was parking vehicles on Prairie Street, in particular in front of homes because their lot was jammed. Maybe the chief could just have somebody go down tomorrow and give him a friendly, you know, you really can't.
Yeah, we also received a call, so I've already talked to Chief Tassino and put together something. So that will be dealt with tomorrow.
Thank you so much for being proactive. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, thank you. I have something too. I got this, I'm sure we did too, from our Deputy Chief, Carlo Sousa. Please see the attached letters of commendation for Officers Michael Johnson and Officers Brendan Campbell from their supervisor, Sergeant Todd Tester, for their life-saving and heroic actions on Sunday, December 31st, 2023. And on behalf of the command staff, I will write an email with immense gratitude and appreciation for Officer Johnson and Campbell, outstanding service and dedication to our community. Again, this is another fine example, a tremendous example of great police work that comes out of our town of Milford as well. Just to, you know, read some of this letter of commendation, which I thought was fantastic. Again, it's by Sergeant Todd Tester. Two officers, Michael Johnson and Officer Brendan Campbell. And he mentions on Sunday, December 31st, 2023, at three minutes past midnight, the Milford Police Department received a call for service from the Fairfield Inn on Fortune Boulevard. The call had originally went out as a verbal domestic and Officers Michael Johnson and Brendan Campbell were dispatched. Within a moment, dispatch updated. Then the call now involved a possible suicide, suicidal male locked in a hotel room in the bathroom. Upon arrival of the hotel, Officer Johnson ran to the second floor and met with the calling party who frantically explained her boyfriend was locked inside the bathroom and she feared he was going to harm himself. With no immediate response from inside the bathroom, Officer Johnson kicked open the door and found the victim to be hanging from the shower curtain wrought by a noose fashioned from a necktie. Officer Johnson observed the victim to be unresponsive and his skin was pale blue. Johnson then used his left arm to support the victim's weight while using his trauma shares in his right, in his right to cut the necktie and lower the victim into the tub. Officer Campbell had then arrived on the scene and assisted moving the victim out of the tub and both officers could better perform CPR until Milford Fire Department and community ambulance personnel arrived. Due to the serious condition of the victim, he was transported directly to UMass Memorial Medical Center where he would eventually make a recovery. I commend the swift and decisive actions of both officers, Johnson and Campbell. Their efforts during the stressful situation can, without doubt, credited with saving a young man's life. They are a true asset to the Milford Police Department and the citizens of Milford. Just getting goosebumps just reading this and it's fantastic police work.
I think it shows the real, the quality of police services, and I know I had to recuse myself earlier, but the quality of police services in this community is spectacular, number one. And then the other thing, such as receiving this email, and I was not on my email late today, so I didn't see it.
Right.
But, Mr. Chairman, but I'll say, you know, the openness of the police department, you know, they've taken the ability to get information out to the public, you know, just to inform people of what's going on to a new level. They're using technology every single day as it advances to advance their ability to reach people and give you true information instead of speculation and rumor.
Right.
On Facebook.
Right, exactly.
I commend them for it. I think they've done a spectacular job. And this is another example, superior police work. Police work isn't just arresting bad guys.
Right.
Police work is taking care of even the mundane situations where, as cops would view it, you know, a couple neighbors that have a disagreement, you know, to the point of saving this person's life.
Right.
You know, right before your eyes. So I commend them every day, I always have. I think that we're fortunate, we're probably the only police department in America that doesn't hunt to recruit police officers. They want to come, they want to work in Milford.
Sure.
It's a good police department. And this community treats them fairly and they treat them well in the respect of themselves. But in equipment, everything, just look at this officer, he's reaching onto his vest and he's able to gain equipment.
Amazing, yeah.
Because people like Rob Tassino, Chief Tassino, who as a paramedic says, hey, you ought to carry this. They carry tourniquets, they carry knock-in, they carry all kinds of things that you just don't see elsewhere.
Exactly.
So I just want to bring that.
I'm glad you did.
From this situation that we should be thankful. I am thankful.
You sure are.
I think a lot of people should be thankful that that's, that's the police officer that's going to come through your door. And it's not all about just law enforcement.
Exactly.
It's about doing the right thing and make sure people are safe and healthy.
That's the human side of police work, that's for Don Shaw. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may, real quick, I think, again, only because of how we opened the meeting this evening, it's an example of, as a community, how safe we are and what a great job this